This is the agenda for the regular board meeting, Tuesday, August the 27th, 2024. It's 10:15. We're in the Board of Supervisors hearing room, Melody Lane, Disney. Pursuant to ARS 38-431.02H, the public will have physical access to the meeting place 15 minutes prior to the start of the meeting. Any item on this agenda is open for discussion and possible action. And if you would stand and join me, please, in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America, and to the public who is in charge of this conference, one thing to remember, and to give you a message with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may be seated. The order of deletion of any item on this agenda is open for, is subject to modification at the meeting. And the board may vote to recess into executive session for the purpose of obtaining legal advice from the board's attorney on any matter listed on the agenda pursuant to ARS 38-431.03A3. Again, we began with the roll call. District one.
Crosby is here.
District two supervisor English is present. District three.
Supervisor Judd is here.
We have a complete board. Members of the public may attend this meeting by Microsoft Teams, computer or mobile app, or by phone by calling 602-609-7513, or 888-680-6714. Conference ID 765-148-949 pound. If you have trouble accessing this meeting remotely, call 520-432-9200 for direction. The board may permit public comment during the discussion of any item on this agenda. To speak on an agenda item or on the call to the public, complete and return the speaker request form to the clerk of the board by 9:00 a.m. on the day of the meeting. Please note that some attachments may be just updated after the agenda is published. This means that some presentation material displayed at the board meeting may differ slightly from the attached version. We do have members of the public who have asked to speak. And as I call, if you would please come to the microphone, you'll have three minutes. Um, the first one is Daniel Jones.
Good morning supervisors. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay. My name is Daniel Jones. I am the Vice President of Miracle Valley Oasis Center. And I'm here today to discuss the importance of preserving Miracle Valley Bible College. We stand at historic moment in Cochise County history this afternoon as you meet to discuss the removal of historically significant sites, which serve as a symbol of our heritage and shared identity. It is culturally significant because it was one of the first Bible colleges in America to integrate African Americans and white Americans in day-to-day life, pioneering radical equality and harmony during a time of segregation and discrimination. It is also significant to the Navajo people due to the Native American days and pioneering work that AAL's ministry led, which continues to this day. The shipo designation from last year stating that the Bible college is eligible for listing in the state and national register of historic places means that under ARS 41862, the Board of Supervisors must exercise caution to assure that the property is not inadvertently transferred, sold, demolished, or substantially altered or allowed to deteriorate significantly. Now, some of your colleagues will have you believe that the rules do not apply, but let me tell you they do. Mr. Coxworth this afternoon will table the idea of demolition yet again, removing a significant cultural landmark from this region directly conflicting with your own mission statement. This would also be deemed an act of gross negligence and religious discrimination and would pave the way for suits against Cochise County, which I'm sure we all want to avoid. Instead of demolition, we must explore alternative solutions that honor and preserve the property for future generations, just like Camp Narco, which recently received a grant of $4 million and a national award. Our organization, Miracle Valley Oasis Center, stands ready to help Cochise County Board of Supervisors fulfill their vision statement, which is to foster diverse, vibrant, and safe communities, planning for the future while honoring our legendary cultural heritage. By aligning with your own vision statement, we can work together to safeguard the property while transforming it into a center that not only preserves our cultural heritage, but also creates jobs, opportunities, and attracts much-needed tourism to the area. Together, we can ensure that the historic property remains a cherished landmark for generations to come. Thank you for the opportunity to address the Board of Supervisors today. Let's continue working together to preserve our rich cultural heritage and build a brighter future for Cochise County. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Rebecca Jones.
Good morning supervisors. I am Rebecca Allen Jones. I'm blessed to report that earlier this year, my husband and I purchased a home and are constituents of this wonderful county. Excuse me, as I'm not 100% well today, but I wanted to be with you. After Dan Coxworth promised me in April that he was done pushing for demolition of any more Miracle Valley Bible college buildings, I am disappointed he's making this last effort just weeks before an auction of the property. I'm frankly tired of the conversation. I'm sure you are also. Allow us a moment to review the matter together prior to your 2:00 p.m. work session. Of course, decisions can't be made today. My hope is your thoughts, uh, my thoughts will be valuable to your discussion. Firstly, since the property was conveyed to the state of Arizona in your care, a whopping $251,226 of taxpayer money has been spent on preparing the property for sale, entirely against the will of the people. That's in addition to the over $572,000 lost in back taxes. Secondly, demolition of any buildings will not only be a financial burden, will also reduce the property value at auction. Mid-century buildings are all arranged to fix up, and bare land is always less valuable. Thirdly, the property was determined eligible for listing in the National Register of Historic Places as a historic district. We should want this landmark to be revived. Its history of helping start the civil rights movement and being a beacon of hope is something worth holding on to. ARS 41-862 did come into play when the property was determined eligible for listing, requiring caution to ensure the property is not demolished, substantially altered, or allowed to deteriorate significantly. The county has openly admitted its failure to prevent significant deterioration and spending substantial funds, which has led to substantially altering the property already. Please see, please cease contributing to its destruction. Lastly, Dan Coxworth is the only one requesting the buildings to be demolished at further substantial cost. You've seen me bring literally reams of petitions representing the will of the community for all people, or all buildings to be saved. They have greatly deteriorated under Dan's direction sadly, but if you sell quickly, they can be saved. Please set aside any fear and ponder the future of this property with financial sensibility, hope, and honor for its rich history, which your own vision compels you to protect. Miracle Valley Oasis Center is ready. The best you could do for this property and counting is set a realistic price, get it into private ownership without further delay. Thank you.
Next speaker is Frances Alvarez.
Good morning. It's good to see you all again. I'm glad to be here and it's good to start each morning with Thanksgiving. So I am thankful to have been born and raised in Cochise County, specifically in Miracle Valley, Arizona. And I honestly would not trade my upbringing for anything. I'm thankful for it and I am wealthy in so many ways because of that upbringing. I am here to speak on behalf of Miracle Valley Bible College and to say no to any and all further demolition of any of the properties there. Why spend more funds on property that is due to come up for auction in just a few weeks? The county has already spent over $250,000 on this property. Let the new owners take on these responsibilities as they have already voiced that they would be happy to do so. Seasons come and seasons go, and Miracle Valley properties have seen many seasons, absolutely. And some have been prosperous, some have been death. Uh, we won't deny that, but our great God is specializing when he takes death and he turns it into life. And that is hope. And I really truly believe that each one of us have hope. That, uh, when we face a circumstance in our life that is death elemental and, um, we need help, we look for that hope. And when we look at that property out there, it looks like death and it looks hopeless. But I have heard and seen this time. It's been in many hands. It's gone through many hands and that's been a spark, you know, it's kept it from being demolished. But this time I have seen people come out of the woodwork to stand up and fight for this property. And so I would say that that is hope, that there is a new season upon us. And we need to see that hope and let us believe once again. I mean, I, I just pray that each one of you, maybe there's a situation in your life that you need hope and that this would begin to spark something on the inside of you, that there is hope. What is exciting is that these property, this property is being fought for. It's being fought that it would lay alive, that it would stand, that something good would come out of it. And so I hope you also will do likewise and citing in no more demolition. Let it go to auction and let those that really have a desire to see it come alive again, do so. God bless you.
Uh, next speaker is Melvin Harder, and I believe he's on teams. Are you there, Melvin? Are you there, Mr. Harder?
Mr. Harder, if you could unmute yourself.
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you now.
Okay. Well, my name is Dr. Melvin Harder, and I am speaking also on behalf of the Miracle Valley Bible College. I'm very concerned about Dan Coxworth spending thousands of, of unnecessary tax dollars on Miracle Valley. And these funds could be used on improving roads and other needs in our county. According to the Cochise County website, the amount spent on that totals 251,000 and $226. He's already spent this amount. The underground, I want to mention that the underground fuel tanks were removed for a cost of $24,525, which the state of Arizona had already agreed. And I had this in, in, uh, in our, in our files. To do this without any cost whatsoever being involved with the county or the property owner. And, um, so there's $25,000 that was spent that did not need to be spent. Coxworth's intentions are to demolish all the buildings on the property. I project this will cost anywhere between 800,000 to a million dollars to take down every, every building, 13 of them, foundations and floor and all this. And from my research, the value of vacant property in Cochise County ranges anywhere from $650 per acre up to $9,400 per acre. This is what the county is. And the county stands to lose, my calculation, is over 100, uh, over $500,000 to lose, putting everything in. I encourage the Board of Supervisors to put this property on the auction. I, I'm asking that there be no reserve. Let it be sold to the highest bidder. And let it be done and be, and, and for the county to be done with this property, to have it behind you. But we don't need to spend another dollar on that property. I think that's very important due to the fact that, um, uh, we're just spending money on something that's just not there. And let it go to the highest bidder. And, uh, I thank you very much for allowing me to speak, and I hope you'll consider what I'm saying to you today. God bless you all. Thank you.
Uh, the next speaker is Tiffany Miller, to be in person.
Good morning. I was disappointed to learn that the county is once again considering investing even more of the public's money into this property, which formerly held Miracle Valley Bible College. I believe a significant amount of public funds has already been poured into this property, which will soon be placed into private ownership. I understand that the county may have concerns that the property will fall into the hands of an organization which will lack the funds necessary to do the work required to clean it up. But truly in improving upon it on the public's bill, it actually increases that very possibility. If the county follows normal procedure, allowing the property to go to auction without any further significant alterations, potential buyers then are required to count the cost and assess whether they're capable of doing the work to make the site useful for their purposes. At any rate, public funds should be focused on projects which are equally beneficial to those citizens whose labors have generated that revenue, not on projects which will potentially benefit developers or organizations that have their own funding. So let's get this land off of the people's dime and into private hands without any additional expense to the county or to the people. Thank you.
Uh, next speaker is Radford Hyde and says he'll be on teams. Uh, Mr. Hyde, are you there?
Hi, good morning.
Yes, good morning.
Can you hear me now? Okay, good.
Yes.
Um, uh, you know, it just occurred to me now that we have, oh, this is Radford Hyde from Sierra Vista. It just occurred to me that if we're having this discussion about public money being spent on this property that everyone's talking about, might as well just throw it in the jail district. We've, we're throwing everything in, uh, in the jail district, um, with, with a big surprise now, aren't we? Everyone was fed fear porn by who knows who about we need to have a new jail because we're going to get sued by the inmates who had inhumane facilities. So everyone got scared. There was fear porn about that. They were going to raise property taxes if we didn't sign off on the half-cent sales tax. Well, guess what? Now the truth's starting to spill all out, isn't it? Nobody's even hiding it anymore that they want, uh, what they want is a justice center. A justice center, they want to spend three, they want to collect $350 million over the course of 20 years. We were sold a bill of goods, $350 million for a jail. That was utterly ridiculous. The FBI in DC wants to move their headquarters and they estimated that a brand-new headquarters would cost 300 million. So all of these people that are coming up with this money are just ridiculous. They want a new justice center all of a sudden. Isn't that clever? Well, guess what? Someone should be asking a question here. We've got Judge Thorne, who is a proponent of the jail district, his wife, running for county attorney. Maybe someone should discuss whether or not there's going to be a conflict in that whole allocation. This is just burning me up. Everyone got tricked. It was for a jail. It was for a jail. It was for a jail. Oh, now that we have all this money we never even planned for, let's build a justice center. Well, guess what? That was in the plan all along, wasn't it? And everybody knew it who was behind the scenes dealing with it. You guys are a bunch of rats. Need to be fettered out. And I'm glad that the, there's going to be at least two-thirds turnover on the Board of Supervisors at the end of this election. Speaking of elections, let's go back to the election, uh, demo. Question right on your website, did the accreditation of the lab that certified ESNS used in Cochise in 2022 lapse before that election? Yes, that's what the VP of ESNS said. Yes. This is exactly why Tom Crosby had a concern. This is the initial reason why Peggy Judd had a concern. Who knows why she collapsed, what kind of pressure she was put under? This is just crazy. If you want to know why people think there might be a problem with elections these days, why don't you go and ask?
Your time is up.
Pardon?
Turning on.
On.
Next speaker is Sandy Trull, and that's in person.
Hello, Sandy Trull from Sierra Vista. And I agree with the previous speaker. Uh, our elections are unconstitutional. And I keep getting up here and saying the same thing, but nothing's been done about it, so I'll just keep saying it. Uh, third-party corporations are not to be involved. Ballots should not be counted in secret. Corporations interfere with chain of custody, machines and processes. Elections are to be one day, paper ballots, voter ID, no mail-in ballots. The entire election system is fundamentally designed to control the outcomes, and we, the people, are not involved in those outcomes. We do not consent to mass mail-in ballots with no chain of custody or voter ID. I have a quote. If you earn it, they tax it. If you spend it, they tax it. If you save it, they tax it. If you invest it, they tax it. If you build it, they tax it. If you live in it, they tax it. If you drive it, they tax it. If you eat it, they tax it. If you give it away, they tax it. Then they waste it. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I move, we approve consent agenda items one through nine.
I'll second it.
Motion in second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Chair votes aye and it's unanimous and approved. So now we move to item number two, which the county attorney has asked that we pull from the agenda because it wasn't, um, a complete description. And we moved to the, it was a public hearing. We move to action item number 11.
Madam Chair, I move that we accept the resignation of Richard G. Kerwach, county administrator effective December 31st, 2024.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in the second. Is there any, uh, discussion? I think the only discussion is that, um, from me would be the fact that, um, I'm glad that he has a place to go to, but I'm sorry that we as the county are going to be losing him in this position because he's been a great administrator. And so, um, I, I would say I'm, I'm not excited about accepting the resignation, but know, know that it's possible. So any other comments before I call for the vote? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Chair votes aye, and it's unanimous and approved. Item number 12, could we have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I move, we approve a special work assignment appointment of Sharon Gilman as interim county administrator with a 10% salary increase and addition of $6.97 per hour effective January 1st, 2025 to July 2025.
July 31st. And I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Is this a contract? No. Okay, thank you.
Any other comments?
No.
I think what we're trying to do is to set it up for a new board so that they will have some continuity. And it will certainly be their choice when they're on this board of how they want to move forward. But there needs to be, um, something in place. And so that's the motion that we're trying to go through now is so that the county can keep moving forward. And if other decisions are going to be made in the future, that's their choice. So having said that, any other comments before I call for the vote? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Chair votes aye and it's unanimous and approved. We now move to item number 13. Motion, please.
Madam Chair, I move the, I move that we approve the Crime Victim Compensation Grant VC 25-002 between the Arizona Criminal Justice Commission and the Cochise County Attorney's Office on the amount of $67,466.55 effective July 1st, 2024 through June 30th, 2025.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Are you going to explain to us how this works?
Yes, go, Boarding, Madam Chair and Board. Um, the victim compensation grant is a renewal grant and it provides funding and monies to victims of, uh, that have incurred expenses to victimization of Cochise County and helps alleviate the financial burdens on the victims of Cochise County.
And are you associated with this program?
Yes. Uh, sorry, my name is Jillian Nunes and I do oversee the victim service program of the Cochise County Attorney's Office.
Any other questions or comments from the county attorney's office?
No.
No, thank you.
Hearing none, then I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 Chair votes aye and it's unanimous and approved. Thank you. Uh, next, uh, we need a motion on item number 14, please.
Madam Chair, I move, we approve amendment two to the inter-agency, oh, sorry, got backwards there. Excuse me. I don't know how that happened.
You faded off there. I didn't.
Yeah, I, I, I lost my agenda, so I gotta get back to it somehow. Here we go. Approve amendment two to inter-agency service agreement M22-0056 between the Arizona Department of Emergency and Military Affairs, DEMA, and the Cochise County Sheriff's Office, authorizing DEMA to provide an additional $100,000 for overtime costs related to border incidents.
I second it.
Okay. Mr. Harris, if you'd like to explain to us the necessity for this.
Morning, Madam Chair, Board members. This is a agreement from DEMA to add $100,000 to our existing grant, M22-0056. This was, uh, DEMA, agreement between DEMA and DPS that are helping each other out. And it was part of the local border support money that DPS asked DEMA to help fund. And they agreed to $100,000, so we're placing it into an existing overtime grant for border-related incidents.
Well, you, you keep mentioning DPS. Is this for the county sheriff or is it for DPS?
This is for the county sheriff's office. It's money that DPS is overseeing that was appropriated and to all county sheriffs. And they in turn asked DEMA to help fund some of it.
Any other questions or comments?
Not at this time. Thank you.
Mr. Judd? Hearing none, then I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 Chair votes aye and it's unanimous and approved. Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Item number 15, could I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the recommendation of the county treasurer for the abatement of property taxes and interest on personal and real property and the removal of personal property tax liens on treasurer's certificate of clearance number 2024-166 to 2024-201.
Second.
Yeah, the motion in a second. It's very weak.
Good morning, Board members. Um, I, I, of course, I'm asking for our, our abatements to go through. Um, I did want to clarify one thing because this is a substantial amount. It's higher than we normally have been abating, um, due to a Supreme Court decision um, that basically erased parcels that belonged to the railroads. The, the large figures that you see like $8,000 per parcel, those, those were the railroad parcels that were covered under this Supreme Court decision. So they're part of the abatement because they're no longer taxable property. And we rarely have abatements on real property. So I wanted to make sure that you understood what we were doing, that I wasn't just trying to, you know, go with your good graces to help me clear up some stuff, so.
I, I, I did notice that it's real property and most of the time we're doing personal property.
Exactly.
And so, um, any other question or comments from the board? Again, you know, I want to thank you for the continuous project of, of getting these, um, properties off the tax rolls that we really never will get taxes from.
No, no.
And, and it's foolish to let a school district or a city or a county believe that taxes are coming in when these properties are not going to be taxable ever. So
That's true.
Thank you for helping us to clear that up. And again, I guess we always need to thank the Sheriff's Department for providing a person to go out and, and monitor all of these to make sure that they are, they are gone or that they're, they actually exist or that they don't exist, so.
They have been truly outstanding, um, over the course of the last several years. They, they have been so dedicated to helping us out with this project. Um, I, as I've told people, this is my last term coming up and this is something I really, really want to see cleared up before I'm gone. I've been there 32 years already and I really want to see this property um, either back to being privately held and paying taxes or cleared up. But I, I just, my heart seizes every time I see the list of stuff that we still have ahead of us.
Right. So we're making progress, so thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Yes.
Oh, how many days left?
Of my, of my term?
Term, retire.
Um, I, I believe it's 1,600, right, right, right in that neighborhood. But that includes weekends, so, um, yeah. But I, I mostly work on weekends too, so it doesn't matter.
Is the trend in your office or the treasurer's trend toward, uh, getting rid of the, or selling the properties without trying to recover taxes? Is that the trend or is it only in this case here that we're looking at?
Um, actually, we, it is the, the sole purpose of my office and me personally to make sure that we collect every dollar that we possibly can that belongs to the, the county. Um, these are services that are basically being paid for and advanced by other taxpayers for people that by other taxpayers for people that own this property. And if they don't pay their taxes, then other people are footing the bill for them. And so, yeah, this, it's not necessarily a trend. It is, it's the statutory requirement of my office to try and make sure that every penny that's levied is collected if possible. And if not, then to return those properties to the tax roll so that we can collect taxes on them.
Okay, so what I was wondering about was the balance between a sale of, for instance, zero dollars for the purpose of getting, getting the property sold and having taxes paid on it. So if you could just give me a little clue on that and?
Um, all right.
I understand what you're saying is the best scenario.
This is my personal opinion. It has no basis in statute or anything else. I don't believe any piece of property ever has no value. And because of the amount of time that has gone on without tax collections on a piece of property, there are debts that are against that property. So when you're given the opportunity to sell them across the counter for minimal amounts of money just to return them to the tax roll, it, it basically says, well, we're going to just live without that other money that we never collected. And they, somebody basically got a free ride, and that's not fair to me.
I understand. I understand that outlook. And so I'm trying to balance that outlook, which I agree with, and I remarked that it is like the best possible scenario to get the back taxes on it. And so part of the discussion that we've had here today is a property that I would consider a white elephant. In other words, the cost of cleaning it up, everybody's talked about the cost of cleaning it up exceeds its value. And so that's, that's why I had that on my mind, and I wanted your opinion. Thank you, Madam Drewick.
Certainly.
Any other questions or comments? If not, then I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 Chair votes aye, and it's unanimous and approved. Thank you, Mr. Harris.
Thanks so much.
Next, item number sixteen from the courts. A motion, please.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve fiscal year twenty twenty-four through twenty twenty-five court-appointed special advocate CASA funding agreement with the Arizona Supreme Court Administrative Office of the Courts, AOC, and the Cochise County Superior Court in the amount of a hundred and thirty-nine thousand, nine hundred and sixty-five dollars effective July first, twenty twenty-four through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Rita, could you explain for us if the board, board members need explanation on the CASA funding and how that's utilized?
Yes, good morning, Madam Chair, Supervisors, Peggy Chud. The court administration is requesting that the board approve the fiscal year twenty-five funding agreement. The CASA funding agreement provides wages, employee-related expenses, and operating expenses for two full-time equivalent positions. The CASA program recruits, trains, and supports the volunteers who are appointed by judges to represent and watch over and advocate for abused and neglected children in the court system. And CASA volunteers stay with that child from day one until the case is closed, and they find them a permanent safe home. So they do wonderful work. And, yeah, the grant supports their efforts in recruiting the volunteers. I'd be happy to answer any questions before and after this time.
Questions, admission?
I also hope for the very best.
Okay.
Okay. Then you have questions answered, so we have a motion that's on the floor. We have a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Chair votes aye, and it's unanimous and approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we have another contract with Chin Planning. Could I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I move we approve contract twenty-four dash eighteen dash BOS dash zero one with Chin Planning for planning services related to the court's portion of the Cochise County Justice Center as outlined in exhibit A in the amount of eighty-eight thousand, three hundred and sixteen dollars.
I'll second it.
We have a motion in the second. Phil? I think we have an explanation, but not for the record on this particular agenda. So if you would go through briefly again for us.
Sure, Madam Chair, Supervisor Judd, Supervisor Crosby. I'll just go over it again so it's a matter of record because this was the same contract that was approved in your jail district meeting previously. Again, Cochise County released a request for qualifications for jail planning services, and through that process selected Chin Planning to award a contract. In general, that contract will include a comprehensive assessment of the county's criminal justice system. It will provide inmate population forecast to determine capacity requirements for a new jail, operational concepts for a new jail, including staffing and space requirements, space requirements for spirit court, justice courts, and sheriff's administration, and cost estimates for operations, site development, and construction of a new jail. And just for a little background, again, because the contract provides services that are appropriately funded by jail district and general fund is being approved not only by the jail district board of directors, but here approved by the board of supervisors for the general fund amount of eighty-eight thousand, three hundred and sixteen dollars.
Any questions or comments here?
No.
Hearing none, then I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, all those opposed?
Nay.
Two to one is still approved, and we move forward. Thank you, contract. Thank you, Phil. Item number eighteen.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the reallocation of fifty-five thousand dollars in fiscal year twenty-four funds previously approved by the board for purchase of a new sign for Cochise County Airport to instead be used for the purchase of a tractor for ground maintenance at the airport.
Second.
I have a motion and a second.
Morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. The board of supervisors approved a budget request for the Cochise County Airport to replace the existing sign with a new sign in the amount of fifty-five thousand dollars. In discussions with the fixed base operator who oversees the airport and maintains the airport for the county, they requested instead to use that money to replace the tractor that they have at the airport. It's an old Ford tractor. It's open, exposed cab. Probably because of all the rain we've received and the amount of mowing they're having to do, the new tractor will be a benefit to the airport and be more safe for his personnel.
He's going to put up a cardboard sign.
Yes, already is.
Or he puts the sign on the tractor and puts that up the road. That's what was the suggestion.
When he's not using any parts.
Yeah.
Any comments or questions?
Who's going to operate the tractor?
The tractor will be operated by the fixed base operator or his staff.
Sounds good.
Any other comments or questions?
Nothing.
Hearing none, then I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 Chair votes aye, and it's unanimous and approved. Thank you, Dan. Okay, item number nineteen, the health department. Need a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I move we approve amendment one to intergovernmental agreement IGA CTR zero six eight eight four nine, sexually transmitted infection investigation STI between the Arizona Department of Health Services, AZDHS, and Cochise County Health Serv, excuse me, Health and Social Services, CCHSS, in the amount of sixty-one thousand, six hundred and five dollars effective January first, twenty twenty-four through January thirty-first, twenty twenty-five.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion in the second. Ms. Barra?
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. This IGA was previously presented at the beginning of the year in February twenty twenty-four. The amendment reflects an increase of four hundred and forty-four dollars awarded by ADHS, which we will continue to utilize for disease investigation, prevention, treatment, testing, and treatment for our STI program.
Any questions or comments?
I believe you said it's a, it's an addition of four hundred and forty-four dollars. Thank you.
Other questions or comments?
Nope.
All right, call for the vote then. All those in favor say aye.
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 Chair votes aye, and it's unanimous and approved. Thank you, Barra. Next, federal and state legislation, I don't believe we have any to discuss at this point in time. We all seem to be home instead of making policy. Mr. Karwatschak, do you have a report?
I do not at this time.
Okay. Current events? Mr. Karwatschak?
I will pass.
Okay. It's aye.
The, did you pass?
I did.
The Rex Allen Days is coming up in a month, and then right after that is Butterfield Stage Days in Benson. So just kind of put that on your calendar, the first and second weekend of October. Those are big events, but coming up the seventh of September, I believe that is the seventh. I should have got it before I came, but the first Saturday in September is the balloon launching, the lights over Benson, and that is a really big deal. So look up Benson, Arizona.
The Lantern.
Yeah, their lantern festival. So look up Benson, Arizona, and the Lantern Festival. You find it all over the place. But that has been a very big event, and I've attended it, and it's, I have goosebumps just talking about it. So, so don't miss that if you can help it. It's very beneficial to the community and very beneficial to the soul. So try to be there if you can.
Thank you. There being no further business, I'm going to adjourn this meeting, but tell you that our next meeting is today at one o'clock in the board of supervisors' hearing room for a work session regarding facilities informational update. Thank you.